All right, well, good evening and welcome to the Town of Acton Planning Board meeting for November seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. It's six o'clock. We have the minutes from October twentieth on hand. Want to do the pledge? Can do the pledge. All stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, in which there is liberty and justice for all.
So I guess I'm looking for our motion to table the minutes of October twentieth until we have time to review them thoroughly.
I move we table the minutes of the October twentieth meeting until we have, until they've been reviewed.
Second.
All in favor? All right. So, under new business, Anthony Albanese, two forty-seven, seventh street, map one fifty-one, Lot twenty-eight, application for greatest practical extent revision. Yeah, we have some.
Um, yeah, back on, in October, what was it, August, you guys did a site evaluation and we were going to use existing foundation and it had a block foundation. It looked pretty clean, but after going out there with actually Dave Winchell and you guys are requesting to move the concrete, I don't know if you remember the site or not, but it had a little concrete pad and everything after pulling that out and really looking at the foundation. It's got some cracks in it and pulling that concrete out is probably going to do some damage and we just want to do it, do it right and do a full foundation in that same footprint and do a poured concrete foundation. Not have any issues down the road with any kind of water coming in or, you know, yeah. And the client's definitely on that same page with not trying to save that foundation due to the cracks that, I don't know if there's pictures that you guys have.
You're still taking out, everything's the same. You're still taking out.
Everything, yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, keeping that the same, taking everything out. Dave Winchell's going to be doing the excavation there, um, you know, and then after seeing there's one crack down by the, uh, that front door, um, there was on the, like the footing even. So we're like, oh, boy, you know, so, you know, client's ready to spend some money and do it right and we don't want to have any issues with building a whole new structure on that after looking at it. There's three areas of concern with cracks in it is what we've found. So have to really get involved, you know.
Would, you're not, um, the, uh, calculations don't change for the, the size of the building?
No, we're going to keep exactly, everything exactly the same. Yeah, we're not trying to do, um, the, the plan was to use existing, still using that same footprint, same design, same everything, just want to change out the, the block to the poured concrete, make it all so it's right. And actually, we're going to do a nice, um, waterproof on that back wall, not just a tar, but do a membrane on that back wall too, you know, to make it right. Yeah.
So what do we need to do to amend the approval?
Um, I don't know if you rescind the other motion, however that works, um, and then just make a new motion.
Well.
It doesn't look like.
No, I thought it did, but.
The motion itself doesn't contradict.
Yeah, I think we just need to add an additional.
Just add into it that the replacement of the foundation?
That the, the, uh, greatest practical extent will include replacing the, uh, the foundation.
Yeah, I just wanted to put it in the motion that it's, that this is what's being done.
Okay with that, Gavin?
Yeah, that makes sense.
I move we, um, approve the, um, Albanese application for greatest practical extent, uh, two forty-nine, seventh street, map one fifty-one, lot twenty-eight, uh, to include replacement of the existing foundation.
One second.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Okay, you just keep that in file with your original.
Yep, that's all, yep.
All right, so will I just apply for the building app? I'm just going to write that in there or something?
Yeah, 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 we'll cover it in the building app too.
Okay, I might just give you a call first before.
Okay.
Okay, all right, guys. Thank you.
Have a good day.
You too.
All right, next on the, best practical location, Stephen and Elizabeth here. Can you just give us a little rundown of what we're planning here?
Sure. We're seeking a permit for our property at seven eighty-two West Shore Drive to build a new detached twenty-four by twenty-eight garage behind the hundred foot mark and then demolish the existing camp structure to the foundation, which is a full cellar, and rebuild on that same footprint.
Just trying to get a little bit bigger, John.
Carcass in my neck.
So this drawing is the proposed?
Yes.
And how far from the lake does the camper now?
It's roughly to the front.
Forty-seven feet, forty-seven point five inches to the front of the deck. It looks like on this, on the plan.
Is there, uh, anything that stops you from moving backwards, like your septic's behind the camp there?
It's directly behind under my driveway.
It was installed in April of this year.
Yeah.
Or twenty twenty-one, excuse me.
Do we have anything that shows what the lot looks like right now?
Uh, I can pull it up on the, um, give me one second, Gavin. Let's see what I can pull. Who's it, five eighty-two?
Seven.
Seven eighty-two? Um, here you go. This is the back of the camp. Um, the front.
All right, I'm confused. You're, you're putting in a garage, right?
Yes. The garage is behind the hundred, so that's not part of the, that's not part of the greatest practical extent. Um, his lot coverage is still below twenty percent with the garage, um, after the garage is, is, um, installed, however you want to put it. He still meets his twenty percent calculations. Um, he is doing a thirty percent expansion, but that's, um, nothing to do with the foot, the footprint stays the same. And I think he's expanding by three hundred square feet. Isn't that what it was?
But you're not doing like a new cottage, though.
He's tearing the camp down. So he's more than fifty percent of market value is being removed, um, so puts him in for greatest practical extent. Um, he's looking to use, uh, the same existing foundation. I believe he had a contractor out there already and they looked, they reviewed it.
Mm-hmm.
Why, why are we look, why is there a sheeting here on the, on the house? Or is that the existing? I guess that's the existing cottage?
Which, which, what are we looking at right now?
Hey, J-Five, second sheeting.
This is his plans for his, for the new place, what he's looking to do. This is just, he has building, he already has building plans. He'd already done. That's what that is. A-five, you're saying?
Yeah.
Yeah, these are just his building plans. He just added it into the packet.
But I thought all we're doing is putting, knocking down a cottage and putting in a garage?
No, 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 knocking down a cottage, rebuilding the cottage, but he's putting in the, the garage is nothing to do with the planning board. That's, that's me, um, because it's behind the hundred. Yeah. So he's getting, he's looking, he's here for greatest practical extent on the cottage. He's going to be redoing the cottage.
New foundation?
New fa, no, same foundation.
Yeah.
Um, new camp.
Yeah.
On top of existing foundation.
He's tearing all that down.
Yeah, he's tearing all that down and rebuilding the camp. That's what he's here for.
And putting a garage in?
And putting a garage in. The garage is behind the hundred, so it doesn't concern the planning board as much as lot coverage. That would be the only question with the lot coverage, but we did the calculations and, um, his survey pretty much did the calculations for us and he's under twenty percent. Once the garage has been put on the property.
It almost looks like the new camp could be placed where the garage is proposed. Right? He just leapfrog over the septic. Would that work or is there, is there anything else in the back of the lot? The lot looks pretty, um, a little broad, a little bit of a, I mean, this. What's the back of the lot like? It's just wooded?
Yes.
Where the garage is going to go is wooded right now or?
It tapers as it goes back from the shore, so it's not as wide in the rear as it is up in the front.
Right, it's only, uh, it's less than half an acre. It's like a, a small lot.
Mm-hmm.
Cause there's no existing garage right now.
No, he just has a septic, um.
And it's brand new? You said it was just put in?
Just put in in twenty twenty-one.
Well, this, this is one of the, kind of the type of site where there is room to move it back, but there's these obstacles in the way, but there are just, uh, I don't know, you feel like it would be possible to place the camp where the garage is now proposed? Be a few ten feet off the side there.
Got an existing foundation.
Right, I guess that's something, something we need to take into consideration. What, what was the year of the, uh, current camp, do you know? Like the year the foundation was put in?
I think it was in the seventies.
So it's not a new foundation?
No, but it's in good shape.
You had evaluated.
Mm-hmm.
Looks pretty good. Yeah.
Should we do a site walk?
We could. I don't know what we would, what we would see, but.
Yeah, I don't know if there's much choice here.
No. So you, and you're the, how long have you owned the property?
I, well, it belonged to the family, nineteen sixty-one.
Family property.
Yes.
You have that on file, the deed? All setbacks on that. Is there a driveway now?
It's gravel.
So there'll be less driveway with the garage?
Yes, would be.
We do have one, page seven, um, relocation, just something, I don't know if it's going to come up tonight. It's something I remember we put in just within the last, probably about five years ago, um, the last sentence of the first paragraph of relocation. The planning board shall not consider any improvements to the property that occurred within the preceding five years. And I just, I remember we put this thing in because we would get these, these sort of applicants where they just put the septic behind the house and then they want to do this process and they would have been able to move it back if they had done it all at the same time. And so we put this verbiage in there so that, to kind of prevent that from happening, so we can keep moving them back. But, um, if he wants to keep the foundation, then that's, it's not a total tear down.
Right.
But I'd say if he wanted, if it came back, like the other applicant wanted to change the foundation, then this, this would be kind of pertinent that we would, as we, you know, if he would put the septic in, in the same process, he may, would have been able to move this thing back, it looks like. But that's all I see. You follow that?
Oh, I get, I agree with you a hundred percent. The only thing, like you said, stated with the, he's trying to use the existing foundation to, to make them tear that foundation down and restart, you're adding your, you know, a good hefty chunk of change to a project that, um, I mean, I think, yeah, I think they get a good amount, yeah, that would, would increase the, um, he's not expanding the foundation, you know, he's not expanding off of it. He's using the same foundation footprint and everything. So, I mean, he's not being, it's not becoming more.
It's not increasing its unconformity.
Right.
Right. And the, the front porch, is that on like, uh, sonotubes or something?
That is lally columns.
Looks like it's on a slab almost.
That go down to a footing in the ground.
They plan on, plan on reusing that same footing or?
Yes.
Don't use the shade?
Oh, yeah. It's amazing. It doesn't have a crack in it for as old as it is. I don't.
And I think he even had proposed maybe even removing some of the driveway because he's not going to need all of that, right? Wasn't it? We talked about that, you know, see how the driveway right now extends past the, the proposed garage? In his plans, he's going to probably remove, revegetate some of that driveway. Um, so he'll be, his calculations will be less than what they are, they're proposed on this, uh, twenty percent sheet.
Yeah, so the driveway will just go to the garage, that jag to the right will come out?
Mm-hmm, yeah. We didn't subtract that from the twenty percent calculation sheet just because he's already under and this is just a.
Well, it's, it's crushed down too, right? Not asphalt.
Right, yeah, it's not asphalt.
Right?
Right, right, yeah.
And it's, what'd you say, forty-seven to the water?
Forty-seven and a half, forty-seven point five, I think is what it says.
Oh, now I see it.
You need your cheaters.
Well, it's like right next to those lines, yeah. I would say it looks good, but if they do end up wanting to, you know, finding something wrong with the foundation, they want to redo it, that they come back for the full process and not just.
Yep.
That's all, that would be my inclination.
So make your foundation work is what it sounds like.
Right.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion, uh, to approve the application for greatest practical extent, uh, to two forty, oh, no, it's on it, seven eighty-two West Shore Drive, uh, map one twenty-five, lot zero one two, um, with the stipulation, the, uh, use of the existing foundation and the building is no closer than the current forty-seven and a half feet.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
One sec. Okay, thank you. Moving things along tonight.
So now we're on to David Herbert, fifty-five Red Gate Lane, application for conditional use for RV and boat storage, along with possibly winterization and detailing services.
Jason gave us the new application after talking outside council and that's what we, you have in front of you. Last time we met, you couldn't figure out which box to put it, put us in in.
Right. So now we're, we're going under uses which are similar to conditional uses?
Yeah, because this is really, there was nothing, you know, I spent a decent amount of time having discussion on this one and where it didn't really fall into anything. Um, and it was close to the boatyard or marina and it was close to some, um, storage. And then there was one that was, it was also close to facilities with less than, more than twenty-five hundred square feet. Um, so there was just so many things that it was close to, but they could never, it never fell into an actual category. So, um, which was explained, which kind of new, but, um, he's like, when it doesn't fall into a certain category, then you use, they had, the planning board in the past has put in whatever it is, I or.
Yeah, it's I.
I where it says, uh, conditions which are similar. To conditional uses and that way, that way it covers everything, you know, um. And so that's pretty much how he, he just said, I would, I would present this to the planning board and say this is if I was to, um, if I was to navigate this one, this is how I would go with it. Um, so that's, it's up to the board if that's what they, if they comfortable with moving forward with it that way. Um.
Yeah, I'm okay with moving that way. I think we're still short some documentation.
What are you looking for?
Well, I mean, uh, the deed for one thing. I don't have the, oh, yeah, there's the map. Okay.
I can pull a deed up in two seconds if you want to see it. I, I know, we should have put it in the pack. I was wondering, he was asking me what you guys were asking for.
Right.
And, uh, earlier and I didn't have an answer for him. So it's my fault that it's not in there.
You think we need to do another sidewalk? It's been more than six months.
Um, that's up to you. You'd be, when we did it last time, it was all snow on the ground, so.
Probably the same this time.
Yeah, um. Yeah, yeah, it's just, it's basically, it's a unclaimed, unreclaimed gravel pit is really what it is. Um.
I was, yeah. It was pretty wide open.
Did you go on the sidewalk?
No, I didn't.
There's very, there's minimal vegetation. There's like some scrap pines that are just have grown, but nothing, nothing tall or nothing that's detrimental that, you know. Gavin, this is on the, the map right here. Oops. This being their house, they're proposing this area.
Further?
It's further.
Further, further to your left. Yep, that corner.
Right over in here?
Yep.
We started, um, on the right side, we started revegetating, uh, we planted, uh, gardens this year and blueberry bushes.
All by the house.
The whole hill.
Mm-hmm.
Was this your pit or you?
No, it was like that when we bought it. We built part of the house in the pit and behind the house and stuff, we've started to, like my brother said, started to do gardens and a blueberry hill and started to reclaim some of the old sand pit. But everything you see there is the way we bought it, you know? It was an old sand pit.
It was the old, old sand pit.
Yeah, it doesn't have the two zones on it. Yeah, it doesn't have the two zones on it.
Oh, does it have the shoreline on there?
No, it doesn't.
Should we read through the, uh, conditions?
Yeah, I had that out.
At least we oughta know what else we might want. One thing we might wanna see on your final, final plan would be like this, you know, you'd have the little box for us to sign in, would be if you could get the, maybe you could get the shoreline zone and resource protection zones on there? How hard would that be to?
Like that?
To kinda duplicate that? Then we can see how the shoreline intersects with your two acres selected.
I, I, I can show you right there if it helps.
Yeah, well, I'm just thinking, that is something, you know, the different zones is something we must always have on the map. Just something we might ask for in the final version.
Do I gotta show you up there, or?
I think we did it last time, and it was like, just, uh, again, yeah, we had it as well.
But it needs to be on what we approved, too.
Yeah, that's kinda what I was getting at, this area right here. Yeah, so the, the back third, the back third is shoreline, so to speak. Yeah.
Right.
Oh, and we figured out none of it's within the hundred.
Right, yeah, none of it's within the hundred, um, and then, so even within, even if you went back to like, the, the boatyard slash marina, whatever you wanna go with, which is allowed in the shoreline, but it wasn't allowed in the rule, that's kind of going with this whole conditions that are similar, it eliminates that situation.
Right. Yeah, but it's still a, just a...
Yeah.
A detail of the law, I think.
Right, it should be on the plan.
Yeah, that is, I mean, pretty common thing to ask for. Y'all just wanna read through the standards, see if we can come up with anything else that they...
Yep, yep.
All right, um, I can read them, um, you ready?
Yeah, go for it, I'm just jotting down, like, if you want more, so then I can, when he asks me, I have an answer.
Okay, so, uh, six point six, point three, point four. So A, the use will not have an adverse impact on spawning grounds, fish, aquatic life, bird, or other wildlife habitat. Yes, it will not have.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, the use will conserve, conserve shore cover and visual as well as actual access to water bodies.
I think they're proposing to put a berm up, too, correct?
Yeah.
It's already there.
I was gonna say, that's a cold gravel pit to the berm, and it wasn't reclaimed, so the berm was probably...
Yep, the berm's there.
Are they gonna go in the existing gate?
What's that?
The existing gate, is that where they'll access it?
No, we're gonna, we, uh, have a second gate just further up. It's on there.
Entrance is, yeah, in the lower right-hand corner.
Yeah.
And where is the berm you speak of, along lakeside?
There's, along lakeside, and...
Yeah. I can see it on this one, you could, there's contour lines to it.
And we said if you wanted a berm at the top of the hill on the waterside, we, as we're pushing, but, uh, sand and dirt around, we can do that as well. So basically, you'll have berm on three sides.
Okay. So you're gonna level the whole site?
Yes. It all, it all contours down into the middle of the property naturally, we'll leave that natural.
So it'll be internally drained?
Yeah, we're basically, we're scraping the ground, we're just taking the bushes, grass, and little trees off.
Yeah.
We're not like, changing like, the elevation and stuff, it's all flat up there.
Right. Yeah, it looks pretty flat on this contour map.
Yeah.
And you have good buffers on the, looks like on your, on the, on the left is a property line with forty feet away.
Yeah, that's, yep. And that's the, that's the other small sand pit beside us.
You're gonna leave that vegetated?
Yes.
I mean, that's maybe one that would come up at a public hearing, somebody might...
Yeah.
You don't have many neighbors, as, as I recall.
Well, the only neighbors are the people on the other side of Red Gate.
Yeah.
Across from us this way is the sand pit that's been bought and sold for the last two years. And then on that side, um, on our side is the other small sand pit. And then there's nothing, nobody until everybody that's on the camp on Red Gate.
Yeah, okay.
The sand pit across the street is a hundred and seventy-eight, there's nobody.
But you'd push a berm up on the top side of that thing?
Yep.
We could ask them to do that.
And nobody from the camps, or any, even if you're driving on Red Gate, you can't even see it, this property. It goes down, it's all wooded, that's all wooded in there, so. The only, the only time you partially see the boats that are parked there is if you're traveling past the gate.
Yeah, well...
That would be it.
Were you asking for a berm, John, which side?
Top, lakeside. Where they were talking about, up here?
Yep.
Okay, yep.
Do you have any numbers on how many boats you propose to store, or it's more just, um, the size of the area?
We can, we...
Or a hundred fifty boats?
We should be able to fit a hundred to a hundred fifty boats. It'll obviously take some time before we ever get close to them, but that's what the potential could be.
Did I see anything about fencing, or? No, no fencing, right?
Nope, he's gonna have a gate, and then security cameras and solar lighting, I think you said, right?
Yes.
All right, um, the use is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Yes.
Traffic access to the site meets the standards contained in this ordinance, and traffic congestion has been addressed in accordance with performance standards in this ordinance. I guess, um, you could provide a, uh, you know, a sketch layout of maybe where the rows of boats would be, and where the drive aisle would be, and, um, we could just okay it that a, a fire truck would be able to turn around in there readily, in case there was a battery fire or something.
Okay.
We just wanna make sure that, um, emergency vehicles can turn around in there.
Okay.
Seems, seems totally doable. Site design is in conformance with all municipal flood hazard protection regulations. And, are you in the flood zone?
No.
I believe so.
It's, I'll put a... I think it's too high.
Yeah. I mean, it's possible, I guess, where the wetland is, it could be a little bit...
It shows it right here.
Okay, all right. Yep, an A on E. Uh, F, adequate disposal, provision for the disposal of all wastewater and solid waste has been made.
Plastic.
Right, the shrink wrap.
The shrink wrap will be recycled.
So you'll, you'll have a dumpster, you'll take it to the act, and...
We have a trailer, we have a dump trailer, we'll put it, we'll bail it up.
Put it in there.
And take it to, um, Maine Mobile Recycling.
Where's that?
Penham Scott. So you can do it for free there, so we'll make one trip a year for free.
Oh, yeah.
They take, they take boat recycling for free there, so it doesn't go into the oceans and environment.
Yeah.
Did not know that.
There's many other places at a charge.
Yeah.
To do it.
What do they do with it, do you know?
I don't.
Is, you're not gonna generate any other trash?
No.
Usually reuse your wood, right?
What's that?
Usually reuse the wood, and you...
Yeah, reuse the frames, each, uh, skeleton.
And, what does it say? Detailing services, what would that include?
Uh, winterization.
So that's pretty much it? This is just our agenda here, says winterization and detailing services.
Uh, minor, minor cleaning, you know, wiping off the seats type of thing.
Right.
Clean water and add antifreeze, it's on this sheet, Gavin, they gave us, yeah, stabilize fuel, wrapping, plastic with the frame.
Water in the boats are gonna be draining out?
Really shouldn't be any water in the boat when they comes to them, you mean?
Right.
Most of them need antifreeze, is if they had a sink or toilets, and...
Right, yeah, what, um... Where do you add the antifreeze?
What's that?
Where do you add antifreeze to the boats?
Um, when they're, when they're winterizing it, they usually add, um, antifreeze to it, and then drain it out, recollect it, but it stays in some of the low points in the motor, or the hoses.
Coolant system?
What's that?
Just in the coolant system?
No, well, you have the water pump, your water pump will cool your engine, so they go in through antifreeze, biodegradable, um, so that the block doesn't freeze, or any, or the pumps don't freeze. Yeah, it's sort of, it's, it's RV antifreeze, it's...
So there's existing fluid in there that'll be drained out?
Yeah, so I guess there would be wa, that would be the water that they're...
Lake water?
Lake water, yeah. Getting drained into a gravel pit.
You're just gonna drain that water in the winterization area, and that's...
Yes.
That's it?
Yes.
Is it likely there's anything in that water?
It's coming right from the lakes.
Right. Unlikely?
Uh, very unlikely, yeah, I mean, it's, it would, yeah, uh...
Okay.
I don't wanna put my foot in my mouth, but I would say...
Well, some of them collect water, too, and they get rained on.
Right, you don't wanna...
The water doesn't go anywhere, it just sits in the boat.
It'll just be waste in there.
Yeah, the only drains I know is the back dog on the boat, where you drain the whole boat. And then you got your bilge pumps, you know, they'll have to be drained out, and so it doesn't freeze, but...
The bilge is normally drained before it comes to us.
No, I, I use the same kind of antifreeze for my campers, the RV safe, environmentally safe stuff.
Same stuff that they use to winterize camps, too, like a camp, they'll put it in the sinks, the toilet, the toilets, and things like that.
It takes pretty little.
Yes.
Doesn't take much.
All it's filling is the, um...
The low, the low hoses, the low spots.
And then in the spring, when you, when they get them, you drain that out?
No, they take, they take the boat that way, that's...
As is?
Yeah. That's what we've always done anywhere we've ever taken our boat. Like I say, there's very little in there, it's not like the whole thing's full.
It just depends on the size of the boat, pretty much?
No, it only stays in the low spots. You basically put it in and drain it out.
Yeah.
And what's left is just the low spots that physically won't gravity drain. It's just like a camp, I mean, you put some in the sink and the toilet, 'cause they don't, you can open a drain, but those, uh, P traps don't drain. Same idea.
Yeah, the back of the boat, your plugs could be that high, and you got that little water area, the plug in the back of the boat could be that high off the...
But that's, that's not, antifreeze doesn't go into the boat, into bilge. You're talking about, I'm talking about the water that goes into the engine to cool the engine. What you're talking about is the bilge, like if you had water coming in your boat, it would go in the bilge, that you would bilge out, and if you pull your plug, that water would drain, but that's not what we're talking about.
So none of that remaining antifreeze will be drained into the storage area?
Correct.
Okay.
I think that's a condition we'd note, aren't we?
Yeah, we're gonna wanna keep thinking about that, just, even if it's just some sort of note that you have about for the people taking the boat, or something. Just, uh, I don't know. I mean, could, they could fill, they could put water in their boat at their home to flush that out?
Yeah.
Theoretically, before they went to the lake?
Correct.
So maybe, maybe we wanna just have a little, we'd ask you to have a little sign or a little pamphlet or something.
We can, and, I mean, to be, to be direct with you, I, I, I'm sure you're in the town boat.
Oh, I'm sure it's like...
It goes in the water, and you, you start it up, nobody does that, I mean, they just...
It's true, but it...
It's just...
Oh, yes. I don't think it's really gonna affect you too much, but maybe we could do something.
You just, you want a note on it that says that antifreeze will not be drained on site?
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm just, just making notes here.
Yeah. And then maybe we could have some, some way to, uh, you know, talk to the owners about the possible impacts to the lake or something, I don't know, keep thinking on that one.
Yeah, well, I mean, I don't know how, I mean, it is supposed to be biodegradable, whether how good it is, it is, you know, but...
Well, if they're using that same stuff I use, it is.
Yeah, it says it right on, the labels say it right on the, on the...
Cause all the stuff inside a, a mobile camper and stuff like that ends up in a sewage system somewhere, so...
He had actually showed me a picture of the actual antifreeze that...
Yeah, it's the marine and RV, same stuff we're using in the camps, all biodegradable.
So biologically safe, because it gets drained into a system somewhere.
It only creates two heads on most fish species.
Yeah. So add, uh, now we're onto G, adequate provision for the transportation, storage, and disposal of any hazardous materials has been made. So you're not gonna be doing oil changes?
No, no hazardous materials, excuse me.
I guess we, you know, we could include, include a note that if you do start doing that kind of work, you just have to come back to us.
Yep.
Do you need a spill kit, just in case?
We have agreed to put a spill kit on. I should've added that on there, Jason and I talked about it, but I forgot to put it on there.
Well, because they might get, get boats to store them in disrepair, and they're already leaking and stuff.
Yeah, or something could let go, you know, a hose.
The mice get in there, whatever it is.
Okay, so we'll put in a spill kit.
Yeah. Okay, H, uh, stormwater drainage system capable of handling a twenty-five year storm without adverse impact on adjacent properties has been designed.
Not applicable. Not applicable.
Man, I think your berms will, the berms on the side will pretty much take care of it.
Well, naturally it slopes.
It slopes right back into that sand pit right in the middle there.
We'll just end up in the lake.
All the boats will be floating?
Yeah. Now they're all wet down.
Adequate provisions to control soil erosion and sedimentation have been made. What's the final surface gonna be like? Are you gonna try to grass it and mow it or are you gonna?
It's, it's mostly sand up there, so it'll either end up being sand or we'll probably put three-quarter crush on it, same as what's on our driveway.
So it'd be, you wouldn't, you wouldn't have a, it wouldn't be vegetated?
No.
Is that number of boats gonna fill that whole two acres?
Yes. That's like, from what I researched, that's like the most you could put on that much space. I wanted to put the maximum, so I didn't say 75 and end up with 125.
Right, right.
I mean, if you packed them in there, that would be the most you could possibly do.
Yeah, but remember we gotta get a truck in, in around it too.
Yeah, that's taking that into consideration.
Okay, um. Okay, there's adequate waters supplied to meet the demands of the proposed use and for fire protection purposes. You have, um, for your, you know, cleaning, are you gonna, what, are you gonna have a source of water there?
No, most of the cleaning is just a little bit of spray and a wipe.
Yeah, yeah.
There's no water out there.
Yeah, and you don't really need water?
No.
And all the, um, the batteries are disconnected?
Yes.
You do that or the homeowner does that?
Uh, Isaac does it when he does winterization.
Yeah, so you leave the battery in there or do you take the cables off?
Uh, it's a choice for the customer. Most people leave them in. Some customers like to bring the battery home and keep it warm over the winter. So it's a little both.
K, the provisions for buffer strips and onsite landscaping provide adequate protection to neighboring properties from detrimental features of the development such as noise, glare, fumes, dust, odor and the like. I'd say yes though.
Yeah.
They have buffers and berms.
Yeah. Was it gravel pit?
All performance students and the ordinance applicable to the proposed use will be met.
Where are the lights gonna go?
Um, we'll just put a few around the borders.
Around the edges?
Yeah, just with motion detectors, just to light it up, something, somebody moves or whatever. More for, more for, more for security than anything.
Yeah. How many, you say a few?
Probably three, four. Potentially the four corners.
Yeah, that would be good to show them too on the?
Okay.
And they'll be downlit?
Yes.
You know, just to help with light pollution.
Yep.
And everyone's happy with the hours. Monday to Friday, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Saturday, 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. So you're gonna ha, you're gonna have somebody up there during those hours or you just be at the house in there?
No, we'll just be at the house. Again, it's not really like an in and out storage. Everybody brings them to you in September and October. Everybody picks them up in April, May.
Yeah.
The rest of the time of the year, nothing's really coming or going.
Yeah, I think, yeah, was it fine?
Right.
N A for the historical?
Yeah. Alright, so I guess we should, uh, schedule a public hearing.
Yeah.
Feels like, I mean, the application is complete. There's still a few details needed, but I feel it's complete enough to schedule a public hearing.
So we're gonna do the second week in December because I don't meet the deadline for the public hearing.
Okay.
Um, so it's the 15th, I think it was. Double check.
I can edit those few items you asked for and give them to Jason next week.
Yeah, if you have everything?
Yeah.
If you have this map kinda ready to go, Jason will help you with that, with the, the block where we sign it and, if you can get the lights on there, maybe the approximate, you have the shoreline zone.
Can I ask about that?
Yeah.
Um, can we put it on based on, uh, the town map or do we have to have a survey to do it? Because, um, I'm working on another property and, um, they're backed up like over a year.
I know, I know, yeah.
But, um, you know, I'm very, I'm very capable with the interactive maps. Uh, we have a lot of features, uh, that we can use as reference, reference points.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I'd say if you put it on there and it looks accurate, then we'll?
Yeah, that, that would be acceptable.
It'll be exacter. Whatever your town map has, it'll have.
Yeah.
It'll match it.
Yeah, I think it's, it's mostly just kind of as a reference to see how many, how much area is in the shoreline zone, maybe, you know, how many boats might be in there and just?
Okay.
Right, so you would, um, add the shoreline, you'd add where the boats are, so we can see for the truck.
The lights.
You'd add the lights, so we can see them downward facing.
Spill kit.
Add a spill kit requirement in the notes. Uh, the deed for the package.
Deed.
Jason has.
Signature blocks. Oh, yeah.
Signature blocks and then the condition?
I'm sure he's got the notes.
No antifreeze. It, it's not gonna happen, but we'll just make that a condition, no antifreeze to be drained in the storage area.
Yeah, I have no, note that no antifreeze will be drained onsite.
And then put the hours of operation on it, right?
Yeah, put those right on here.
Yeah, right on the map.
Yeah.
And also the max. Um, 150 boats, jet skis or RVs.
You want them on, on the map?
Yeah, just a note that the maximum is.
So I have a public hearings for December 15th at 6:00 PM. Does that work for the, you guys?
How much time do you have to give them?
I have to give the public 14 day, or 10 days, but we're, we're on Thursday. I can't get it out because I would've had to notify them this morning to have it run.
Right, but the 15th is like almost a month away.
I can't, I can't meet the first.
How about the 8th, which is our meeting date?
No, it's first and third. It's the first and third Thursdays of the month.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
So what, where have you been for the last two years?
On the first, it's a Thursday.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you wanna come on and make an extra meeting for yourself? You might be the only one here, but?
Need a quorum. Alright, well, 15th then.
Do you wanna do a motion for that?
I think you need to, for the public hearing.
I move that we hold a public hearing for the, uh, conditional use application at?
55 Red Gate Lane.
There you go, 55 Red Gate Lane. Well, this, actually, it's Lakeside Drive, map 119005. Um, on 15 December, so what?
Yeah, 6:00 PM.
6:00 PM on 15 December.
A second.
All in favor?
All set.
Alright.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, guys. Have a good night. Yeah, I'll send you a list of, uh, what they like to see too. It might not be till tomorrow afternoon.
It's fine, thank you.
Alright.
You notify the abutters?
I will, yeah. Yeah, that'll go, I'm gonna have that go up tomorrow. Or Mon, tomorrow or Monday is, uh, they have to, they have to see it. I think it's like the same thing, 10 days or so many days before, so?
We'll see if anything, if anybody shows up to hear any?
Well, at this time, point, half those people are already going back from somewhere, you know?
Yeah.
Alright, we are set for tonight. Still waiting on Pepin?
He will be in, he was supposed to actually, um, the last discussion I had with him was on Monday or Tuesday and they were, uh, he was supposed to have brought some documentation in, um, so that you guys could review it before the next meeting, but I didn't see anything. I didn't get an email today. I've, so, I know he said that it was gonna be tough for the site plan to be revised for this, for tonight, but he was supposed to, uh, submit some stuff for me to give to you guys, but it must've just slipped.
They're working on it.
Working on it, yeah.
That, we gave him a specific list.
Yes, yeah, yeah. And, uh, they, he said that he's got some good progress on it, so, um, it was another reason why, um, he'd just skip out, make sure they have everything done before they come in.
Yeah.
You know, that's, I, I pretty much, you know, said that the board was very adamant on, that they wanted the stuff completed before really reviewing it anymore, um, or finding it complete is what it was.
Yeah.
Um, so?
Right.
Uh, I mean, we're right, he's right there. He just needs to give you guys the documentation and then we'll be able to schedule a hearing, whatever. It's, it's at that point, you know?
Yeah.
So? I believe, uh, yeah, the traffic study for H Rogue was done and she couldn't get up to do the paving because they, uh, West Shore, cause they were paving, so she was going back to do that. It was the last I knew and then, um, but yeah, he was supposed to submit something so I could all send it to Ben before even, so he could review it and have any notes, but? I'll, I'll reach out to him tomorrow or Monday and, uh, try to get it so that it can be at least reviewed and any other kinda notes can be produced for the meeting so you guys can see it.
Yeah, yeah. And we got the new papers from?
Yeah, um, they couldn't make it tonight. Um, he had, he had another planning board, um, the consultant, he had a plan of a meeting tonight, so he couldn't do it. Um, as much as they wanted to be here, they just, they couldn't, uh, or at least he couldn't, so. And he, he's better off to answer the questions. I think he like, he's, he knows the project pretty well. So they'll be in on the first for the final approval, hopefully, for them, um, along with the Pepins. Um, and as of right now, and then this condition, nope, they're not coming back for another two weeks. So it'll be, I think right now, the, for the agenda is Camp Kitta and Pepins.
Yeah.
Um, that's, that's what I have on the, that's it for right now. Uh, so we'll?
That's good. We'll probably, I mean, we'll need a lot of that time for Pepin anyway.
Mm-hmm. I talked to the town attorney about the, um, uh, reclamation fees.
Yeah.
Said it's for the board to decide and cross that path when we get to it, is pretty much, so if you guys decide whichever way you wanna go, um, and he's, that's?
In terms of the amount and the form?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, it's the planning board, and you know this too, and I just subsated it. But there's nothing written. There's no, I don't have a written policy or I don't have a, or it's not, the ordinance hasn't been changed, so? Yeah, and he had said that you guys were the ones who formed it was, um, the reclamation for the solar to be cash. Is, is that correct or? Yeah. Yeah, so, um, either way, uh, he said, mm, do whatever you guys gotta do and then pretty much the town will cross that path when we get to it.
Right, right.
So, um?
You don't know how that would, how that'll play out exactly if we, if we, um, let them do a bond?
Well, I think it would be more, I would recommend not a bond, but more of a letter of credit, uh, because that goes through a bank, not a bonding agency. And the bonding agency is what, I mean, you, there's obviously different?
Bonding agency could change hands or go on.
Correct. I'd rather stick with a letter of credit or cash, um, in this situation. Because the bank's never gonna go on, you know? It does happen, but?
Yeah.
My recommendation would be those two.
Alright, well?
But the cash is gonna be a very hard one for somebody of, of that size, you know, 80 something acres, 6,000?
Well, maybe he needs to, you know, reduce the open area maybe.
Right, yeah, so what, it's 40 acres, I think is his open area.
Still, I mean, weren't we noodling with that, cause he had 35 and then he added one to 40, but?
Yeah, he added a 35 numbers.
Right, well, I mean, if we tell him it's a cash escrow, then maybe he'll just rethink their number again. I don't know, are we not supposed to?
Yeah, the, um?
Alright, okay. And, yeah, so that's, that's what we got next to him.
Yeah.
And in terms of changes to the, proposed changes to the zoning ordinance?
One of the things we need to look at too is, um, so we had that new LD 2003, the, um, yeah, well, that?
The little booklet?
Well, the little booklet, but the new thing that the legislature put into about growth and ADUs.
Yes.
Every law, you know, we need to really sit down and say, okay, ADUs are still not allowed in the shoreline zone, that's, you know, so? You know, because we have to be more specific where, where you want them, so do you, obviously keep it at 800 square feet, but it also allows up to two ADUs on a property. Now, do you, we gotta figure out, because you can put restrictions on it. Um, if you, if your lot size is this big, you can only, you're only allowed one. If your lot size is this big, then you're allowed two, things like that, um?
Right, we can just say non-conforming lots or?
Right, but it, it's something that we need, that the board should really look into, um, with that.
Do you think it would be worth, um, contacting Lee J Feldman there and?
We can.
Seeing if he came up with any proposed verbiage for towns and?
We can, I can definitely do that, um?
And he could give us, uh, drafts for us, Lee?
Sure.
That's a good idea.
Cause he's kinda doing that anyway, right?
Yeah, I'll reach out to him.
He's the county guy?
He's Southern Maine planning.
Yeah.
Yeah.
He's the guy who came in for that workshop. Um, so I think that's something that the board really should, and I have, uh, I'll make a copy of it. I'll make a copy of it. I have the whole LD 2003 that, that's provided by the state, um, and it actually shows you what you can do to restrict some of these things, uh, because if you, and if you don't, then you end up in a, in a pickle later on.
Yeah, cause we do have not just the shoreline zone, but also the resource protection district.
And where it's not allowed already, so, I mean, they might be allowed in some of the resource protection, but where it's not allowed in the shoreline zone, that, that still covers the town, but? We don't have anything saying that, um, this two acre lot can't have, um?
Five ADUs.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. And, uh, so you wanna put a restriction on your prop, on the properties, you know, like, um, right now, uh, if you wanna do a multi-family, um, you need up to 350 feet of road frontage and double the acreage. So, um, that's something to consider.
Right. Yeah, yeah, that would be good to get. Get some, something from Lee J and probably have him come in at some point to discuss it if we, if we'd like when he, when he's drafting up. And we'd wanna do that kinda soon, actually.
Yeah, what time's wasting?
Right. Come in, maybe he could come in like first, right in January, one of the meetings in January, first meeting in January or something.
I'll try to set something up with him, um?
Yeah, yeah, cause that's a pressing issue.
Yeah, that's a huge change to every community in Maine, so?
Yeah, we, we gotta understand the timeline again too.
Yeah.
You know, when we have to get?
Yeah, I'll ask, yeah, I'll ask for that, for that budget, they call? Yeah, I'll ask, yeah, I'll ask for that, for that budget, they call it a budget timeline or whatever it is, I don't know.
Sounds like it moves to the left every year.
Right, well, it's February, we need to know how many warrant articles we wanna reserve.
Right, well, they, well, they had.
That's kinda the first.
Yeah.
It might have gotten, well, it could have gotten even worse for us, because they tried doing the change in the town meeting to a vote, or whatever it was for April, or something like that.
That was just a poll, wasn't it?
Yeah, but it was, didn't, it didn't pass.
Right, it was close.
So 40 people showed up to the town meeting this year and 700 people voted to keep the town meeting, it's like, you guys don't even come anyway.
Yeah. Yeah. But it was just a poll too, it was like a non-binding poll.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know, I didn't, I'm, I'm not from Akron, so I didn't even see what it was.
But like, if we get more selectmen, we're gonna be.
Yeah, well, we got that voted in, there's gonna be five.
That would be a referendum, bro.
John's gonna run for selectman.
Yeah, that's the most ridiculous thing I've ever heard of.
More confusion.
More money.
That's why it is.
Yeah, it's hard to say it's gonna be what, how it's gonna be.
Yeah, it's gonna be a tough situation, because the way it's written right now, it's, and I, it's not set in stone, but there'll be a whole year where there's only four selectmen, not five, so I mean, then you, when you got a two-to-two vote, then it's, it washes away. It's a different situation, but that's not, that's not my department, like, um.
Alright.
But, um, I'll get the public hearing notices out, I'll get the, that was one of the things we needed to change in the way we post the public hearings. I don't know if we talked about that.
That's something you could ask Lee J too, if, if, if.
Well, right now, we have.
You can eliminate the newspaper.
Right, and just put it online.
Yeah.
I don't know how that works.
You know, we should ask and see if any other communities have done that yet. Give us some, something to follow.
Yeah, I don't know about any hope that.
Cause it could be just like a state mandate and it hasn't been changed.
No, but you can also do something you don't have the ability to do, we don't have a newspaper.
Oh, they have that little.
Yeah, they have the reporter. That's not a legitimate newspaper, it's the private.
Yeah.
Well, it's the only one that people get right now, you know, Journal Tribune, is there even a Journal Tribune anymore? That was the one I have been for, I don't think that's around anymore.
Portland Press Herald.
Someone said there's one in Sampson.
Papers are.
Yeah. I think most of that's going online.
I mean, papers are, I hate to say it, but they're dying off.
Right.
Well, let's get caught up with the times, everybody's online.
Yeah, as long as other, other towns are doing it and it's something, you know, it's not gonna run afoul of the state.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would say a good amount of the people who actually look at the reporter or, or trying to see if there's a meeting, a lot of people still check the website and see, and check for meetings and things like that, so.
Yeah. Well, I mean, what's wrong with us posting on the WhatsApp and Acton Facebook page? There's a lot of people on there.
Yeah.
But other than the fact that it's actually, you have to have permission to be on there, cause it's.
Right.
Facebook is the. She, she posts a lot of stuff that's going on in Acton.
Right, yeah, probably. Well, I think the posting, you know, if we're gonna do just the internet, we gotta do multiple locations.
Yeah.
At least at first.
Yeah, a lot of other.
So you do the town website and then the Facebook one, whatever it is, you know?
You also got Twitter and you got all the other things too.
Yeah.
But I mean, it could, yeah, it could go on the town website. Good options.
Yeah, I do have to start really thinking if there's any other changes we wanna make this year or next year.
I didn't bring that full, but.
Yeah, well, I mean, maybe, maybe we just aren't gonna make a lot of changes this coming year.
We made some big ones last year, I mean, and some of them didn't even go through anyway, so.
And I was thinking about holding a public hearing just to get public input about what they'd like to see changed. It could be a real show.
Yeah.
There could be some productive.
Yeah.
The survey.
Right, the survey.
Well, that way you don't have to put a, try to address a hall full of, you know, hold the public.
Well, we don't really have to, but, you know, address the comments more and just listen to what they, you know, they all think.
Yeah, and hopefully people show up, that's the, that's the biggest thing, is getting involvement, people involved in it. So that we can, the board, the planning board can work for the people and not just.
Not just guess what they want, you know?
Yeah, it seems they don't show up until they're ready to come forward.
Right. Alright, well.
Okay. I make a motion that we adjourn?
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?